Opening of the meeting. Announcement, adequate notice of meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Clause of 1975. This meeting notice was sent to the Ashbury Park Press on May 13th, 2020, and it has been duly advertised in the Ashbury Park Press issue of May 18, 2020. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and the requirements of posting of notices have been met on May 13th, 2020. Could the superintendent lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure thing, Mr. President. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Toscano, are there any changes to the executive agenda that you wish to know?
Yes, Mr. President. The Board did not discuss the HIV report that was reflected on the agenda that was made available. And the only other additional item that the Board discussed is Item Number 7. The Board discussed legal issues surrounding staff and student health.
Okay, let's move on to meeting minutes.
Actually, Mr. President, we just do need a roll call. That was the only thing that was given.
Can I have a roll call, Sean?
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Here.
Mrs. Higley?
Here.
Mrs. Lavin?
Here.
Mr. Messinger?
Here.
Mr. Moses?
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Acetola?
President, yes.
Meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 22nd, 2020? Right here, minutes.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Bruno?
Second.
Second, Miss Higley.
Could I... We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Epstein.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses? Mr. Moses, yeah, I just muted him.
This is the mute.
I apologize. Go ahead, Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Moses, I apologize, I'm muting you because there's feedback on your line, and so just unmute yourself when you want to speak, but I'm muting you because it's causing feedback on the larger sound.
Sorry about that.
At this point, I'd like to yield before to the superintendent, I know he has lots to discuss tonight. Before I do that, I just want to express my appreciation to all the administrators of the district, and the teachers, and the parents, for coming together during this most unusual time. It's never happened before. And as a citizen of Colts, I'm quite satisfied with what I've heard so far in the processes that have been presented. So with that, Mr. Sampson, if you'd like to present to the Board and the public.
Thank you, Mr. Acetola, I appreciate that. So, a number of items to go through tonight. And I'll start with, obviously, the school reopening, which is what's on everybody's mind. Outline a little bit of what we've been up to the past couple of months. So, you know, obviously, our schools were closed on March 13th. And I've said before, no one at the point at that time anticipated that it was going to be for the remainder of the school year. But unfortunately, it was. Schools in New Jersey, at this point in time, have been tasked by the Governor and the Department of Education to reopen in September in some capacity for in-person instruction. And so, there was a guiding document that was put out by the Department of Ed, a 104-page document that lays out some explicit expectations, some not-so-explicit expectations, and a lot to be interpreted in one way or another. And so, the bulk of our time over these past couple of months has been gearing up on what September may look like. As a part of that process, we formed a restart committee comprised of school administrators, Board of Education members, faculty and staff, parents, students, medical professionals, municipal officials, legal counsel, you know, so really, a broad spectrum of the community. And there's about 80 or 90 individuals that have been taking part in that in some capacity. We had our first session back in June. We had our second session on July 15th. This group has served as a real sounding board as we work through the iterations of our planning. And we plan on reconvening that group in early August. Tonight, we'll be adding an additional Board meeting on August 10th in order to meet the timelines expected by the state in terms of our school reopening plan, which tasks us with submitting our plan 28 days before the first day of school. We're presently looking to alter our calendar, where we'll move our October Professional Development Day for teachers up to September. That will allow us another full day on September 9th to engage with our faculty and staff to make sure that everyone is as prepared as possible for a school reopening. And that would move our first day of school to September 10th. Many, many things to consider here, lots of moving parts. As I said here on July 20th, the one thing I will say is that we are 20 days out from submitting the plan, and we are about 50 days out from the opening of school. The whole world can change in that time, and we understand that. We are planning appropriately. We are building a plan that we think we will be able to scale up or scale down as appropriate, given the context of what might be happening in the larger community. A few items to note. The planning around this is complicated, as there's been some shifting guidance. Obviously, there's a lot of anxiety in the community, and nationally, certainly. And we understand that. And what I've opened up the forums with, and what I will continue to open with, is telling everyone to just take a breath, to understand that there are a lot of moving pieces here, that folks are trying to do what they believe is safe and best for the community. There are a lot of sharp opinions in that. Some folks believe that every child should be back in school. Other folks believe that no one should come back to school. And, you know, every hour or so, I receive an email or a call saying one thing, and every hour or so, I receive an email or a call saying another thing. The community is obviously divided. However, when we polled our parents, they were clear to the tune of about 80% as a first or second choice that they wanted some form of in-person schooling in the fall. That was their first priority. About 18% of our parents said they will not send their children back in anything but a remote environment. So that's the Governor's announcement of an executive order today will give those parents a pathway as well, and we'll work diligently to plan for that. What I would say to the community is, I taped a rather lengthy community update. It's about 40 minutes long. The video was shot, edited, done, and that's going out to the entire community tomorrow. Will be posted on our website with an accompanying letter that explains where we are as of July 20th. Fairly comprehensive. I will certainly, I'm going to go through some main considerations tonight, but most of what I am going to talk about has been captured in some capacity in that video message to the school community that everybody will be receiving at some point tomorrow. What we are looking at as we sit here today is a couple of things. One, a opening that is hybrid, which means some in-school, some out of school. An opening that involves a partial day. So dismissal at 12:00 and at 1:00 for students. It's a full day, we're looking at, as we sit here tonight, a full day for faculty and staff. And a lot of work has been done to ensure that we're going to be able to do that safely. So, what's guided us through all of this are really three basic constructs around student growth, whole child, and first and foremost, health and safety. I can say from a health and safety standpoint, we have worked diligently to shift out all of our air filters. We've brought in an engineer to check all the ventilation in our rooms. We are in the process of making all of our bathrooms and any other high-touch area hands-free. We have purchased inordinate amounts of PPE for our faculty and staff. We have large-scale temperature scanners that will be outside of each building, capable of taking up to 70 students in a minute. We are planning on having students and staff wear masks at all times during the school day. We are working on a schedule that will incorporate mask breaks into that day that will allow students to move around a bit more and to incorporate some elements of social-emotional learning into the larger day as we move forward. It is not definitive yet, but this is the schedule that we've outlined that we're working toward. No, we're not locked into anything just yet, because too much can shift in the next couple of weeks. Busing, students will be expected to wear masks at all times on the bus. In our parent survey, approximately 25% of our parents indicated that they will be transporting their students to school. They will not utilize the buses. We are looking at potentially an A-B schedule, which means on A-day, students would be in school. On B-day, they would be home remotely. It would cap our student capacity in our buildings to open the school year at 50%. Done alphabetical order. However, understanding that a full 18% to 20% of our school community has stated that they want remote only, we understand that that 50-50 split on an A and a B day will be closer to 40-40 in terms of the actual numbers in the building. Our custodians have been working incredibly, you know, all through this. We feel very equipped to engage in all the sanitizing processes that are going to need to take place. We've purchased a number of high-end cleaning devices that are industrial strength to do this, to make sure that we're doing that on each and every day. We're not planning on opening up with lunch, because it has an element of exposure. Obviously, students have to take their mask off to eat, and it's much more difficult to move students through the hallways. We have a plan in place to scale up if need be with lunch, where we've looked at developing an app where students could order lunch from a classroom and such. But we're not going to open that way in September. We want to manage, we want to make sure that when we open, we open to stay open, and that we mitigate as much risk as possible in order to not have to close once we do open. We will be looking at grab-and-go lunch at the end of the day. Athletics are up in the air at this point in time. The NJSIA has pushed the athletic season, fall season's start date back to September 14th. There is a proposal out there that I looked at today that is looking at moving all sports post-January and combining that in some way. We'll see where that lands. Actually, this week, our fall sports started their offseason workouts in a very controlled environment, and we'll see how that goes. This is obviously a fluid situation, can change at any point in time. We are obviously working, we've been working closely with some of the officials at Center State Hospital as well. Dr. Kompovich in particular bouncing our plan off of him. Our school physicians are an intricate part of our planning here as well. We're guided certainly by the CDC guidelines, as well as the American Association of Pediatrics. Our nurses have been trained at Johns Hopkins on contact tracing, though we've met repeatedly with our health officials, and they've assured us that any contact tracing will be covered by the Health Department, not the school. At this point in time, we have about 6,000 of our parents that responded to our survey, so we feel we have a very strong grasp on what they're looking at. And as I said, that's somewhere around 80% of them in some capacity wanting in-person instruction, whether that's full or partial day. We've taken the full day off the table to start the school year. That is not a consideration at this time. We are only looking to open partial day. What we are working through right now, fully anticipating that there may be times when we might engage in short-term closures, that we have to plan for remote as well, and be prepared for that. And so, we are, in the next couple of weeks, going to finalize our hybrid plans. We are trying to closely align our hybrid plan with our remote plan so that we can toggle between those worlds very easily and adroitly. I've said this at the community forums, and will be in the video message that goes out to our community tomorrow. But the daily schedule in the fall will be much more synchronous, meaning real-time, than it was in the spring. So that means an expectation around students logging in at the time of the class, checking in in some capacity, and live instruction. So, the fall will be very different than what the spring was. We understand that our teachers did a phenomenal job in the spring. We had to pivot quickly. We were able to do that. We connected 500 students to devices and internet hotspots within a week. And I was proud of that work. And we also know that as our students come through our doors in September, they're coming to us from an environment of a global pandemic, an awful lot of racial unrest across the country, and probably with some trauma. And we understand that, and so we're working with our counseling staff to ensure connections are made immediately. We built down a fairly elaborate system, quickly in all of this, to identify individual students that were falling through the cracks and to create multiple adults responsible for reaching out to those children. We know we need to do that for our incoming ninth graders in particular, who we don't know yet. And we also know that the transition to ninth grade, historically, is the most difficult transition for students. And so, we're planning around what those transition opportunities may need to look like, because they're going to be a little bit different in a hybrid and remote world than they were under a traditional schedule. As I said earlier, we're altering our calendar tonight with the Board's permission, and we're going to move, make October 12th a regular school day. We'll move that PD day there, front load that to September 9th. That gives us three days to work with our faculty and staff before we're back into whatever the September schedule ultimately lands at. So, I know the Board has all seen the video. The video is fairly extensive, goes into a bit more detail than that. I'm not going to go into all that detail in my Board report. Suffice to say that the video will be out tomorrow. It will be up on the website, and everyone will be able to tune in and see some of the specifics there. And I will say that we'll plan to do another one of those prior to the August 10th Board meeting to update the entire community about where we are, and then probably do another one again before school opens in September, because this is a fluid situation. So, we'll see where it all lands. And I feel confident that we'll be prepared to open safely. And what I will say is, if for any reason we don't feel confident, we'll make that clear. You know, I'm not, as superintendent of schools, I take health and safety first and foremost as the main priority here. You know, certainly, teaching and learning and the academic outcomes are our focus. But we have to guarantee everybody's safety, and so we'll monitor the situation closely. Our central admins and our building principals are meeting regularly to develop more specific schedules in the school. We know that if we're requiring students to wear masks, they're going to have to find different ways in the school day to give them breaks as well, and we're working through that. An awful lot yet to be finalized, though, as we sit here on July 20th. I'll take questions at the... If anybody wants to ask school reopening questions, that's because I had other things on the item.
Yeah, I have a bunch of them. So you had said that it was going to be a half-day, or however you describe it, for the kids when they go to school, but a whole day for the teacher. So when the kids leave the building at 1:00, what's the teacher then going to do from 1:00 to 3:00?
So yet to be fully finalized, but we know that we need to provide as much support as possible for the faculty and staff in this environment. And so, we expect any back end of the day to include an awful lot of professional development opportunities, opportunities for our faculty and staff to collaborate with one another, especially those teaching the same subjects. And, you know, certainly, you got to get a lunch break at the end of that day, just come off of four hours. But really, an opportunity to focus on making sure that we're providing as much support as possible to thrive in a hybrid environment.
And with respect to sports, you had mentioned sports. So, let's say hypothetically, the football season starts, and either it gets canceled completely, or they play one game and then they cancel it. So do all those coaches for all these sports get paid for the whole semester, marking period, however?
Yeah, that's something that will be determined based on whatever the closure might look like. I mean, I can say right now that the fall coaches this week are working with their student athletes.
Right. I just like, did you know whether the state passed another law like they did with the bus drivers that everyone had to get paid? I didn't know if the state had gotten involved with that.
So, the state has gotten involved by not getting involved, right? So, Senator Sweeney did put out a furlough bill. The Governor has yet to take action on that. That would be what would change under the constraints under which we're working with the CARES Act presently. I'm not missing anything on that, Mr. Toscano, let me know, but... And so, there is a furlough bill sitting on the Governor's desk that action has not been taken on, which means status quo for schools from what the spring was. If there is action taken on that furlough bill, then... And schools are in some capacity told to go remote or required to go remote only. If that furlough bill was passed, I would imagine that furloughs would be a possibility for school systems. If it is not, I believe that that is not granted to school systems as it is presently constructed.
And so, obviously, with the partial day, so I assume all the clubs and all, that's all going to have to be remote? Where, like, how do you mix it in? Like, let's say there's Spanish club, right? But there's no Spanish club meeting in person? So then, we're still going to have it, but it's going to be remote?
Yeah, so if we're, if we are in a hybrid or remote environment, clubs and activities are going to have to function remotely. You know, that's just a sad reality where we're going to be.
Oh, here's my last question about this part, okay. Not that I think you're going to have the answer. But, the Commissioner of Education, is his last day going to be August 1st?
Well, he's retired already.
Oh, sorry, but it was supposed to be August 1st, but he left early. Is that what happened?
No, so...
Wasn't it supposed to be the August 1st?
It was originally July 1st. I believe the Commissioner then extended it to August 1st to stay a month later. And I believe that there was then a change about a week and a half, two weeks ago. And the state named the Assistant Commissioner, Kevin Deemer, as the Acting Commissioner, basically.
So, I did a little bit of research, not much. So Kevin Deemer, his background's not in education?
Mine is in finance, right? He got his master's in public policy, and he's involved in school funding.
So there's a lot going on. The state's dictating. Who in the world is actually making these decisions? Like, who decides we're doing this, we're not doing that? Like, I'm just curious where Phil Murphy's getting his information from?
So, I wouldn't know particularly. I would say that the difficulty in this situation has been, obviously, the Commissioner left. Two of the Assistant Commissioners also left. And the Department of Ed is in the process of a number of furloughs presently. And so, a lot of employees of the Department of Ed have been furloughed at this time. That, in some ways, obviously, creates a gap. And I think that if I was hedging my bets, I would say that, you know, the Governor's Chief of Staff and those folks closest to him are probably the ones who are driving the decision-making at this point in time.
Very, I'm speaking personally, but very upsetting during this tumultuous time that the state holds this, when these kids' lives are getting upended, their educations are getting, you know, partially destroyed, and from a state level, there's nobody home. It's very upsetting.
Yeah, what I was told, you know, was that the furloughs were engaged with because it provided an opportunity for more federal funding, and they had to take that step prior to July 30th, or they would have lost the funding. So I think it was a financial decision. I think that you're hitting on a point right now, you know, where no matter how we look at this, there's been a lot of disruption to our kids first and foremost, a lot of our school community members, our faculty and staff as well, and we're trying to balance all those needs. In this environment, I can say it's been the toughest environment that I've faced in 13 years as superintendent, because there are no good answers. You know, you make the best answers that you can, you make the best decisions that you can to answer questions, but the, not just the community, but when you look out state and national, this is a divided, we're in a divided place here as a country. And folks feel very passionately one way or another. You know, I've had parents tell me that I should be ashamed of myself for not bringing kids back 100%. And I've had parents tell me I should be ashamed of myself for trying to bring kids back. So, there's no easy answer there. And again, we're going to be guided by the science, the data, the expectations that are put in front of us, and we're going to meet those to the best of our ability to open schools.
But, see, the problem is, is that you have all this intellectual capital, but no matter how smart you are, the state still has ultimate control. You could decide one way or the other, all day, remote. But at the end of the day, the state is coming down and basically telling you what to do. So it's like wasted intellectual capital by you and all the other real education leaders in the state.
Yeah, I...
That's the problem. Like, you could theoretically, let's say you had this extreme... I think if you had this extreme opinion that every kid's going back to school all day, the state would never let it happen because of all the regulations. So, you're doing this with your hands tied behind your back.
Yeah, look, and every district has its own context. So, smaller places are able to potentially bring 100% of their students back. They can manage it, you know? Monmouth County, you know, the norm pretty much seems to be about 50%. Most of the districts across the county are looking at bringing about 50% of their kids in on any given day. And, and there's different, there's different schedules. I do, you know, we've asked, there, there were a couple of things that we asked for some, you know, more specific guidance on and other things that we want flexibility on. And so, you know, we try to be careful as leaders to, you know, you can't demand all this flexibility then cry when, you know, there's not, there's not, you know, some things, you were left with a choice that left in the wind. But some things we do believe are important for, to have a statewide perspective and not just a local perspective. The remote option for parents is one of those that we advocated heavily for that changed today, which was a, which was a plus. You know, we advocated in the beginning of this that, you know, when we survey our faculty and staff, the number one concern about returning is not medical, it's childcare. And so with 600 school districts potentially having 600 different schedules, you know, that might be flexibility that's potentially problematic in the sense that if there may be some sort of base, you could have eliminated some childcare concerns. But I don't know because everybody's context is so different. It's, it's hard, it's hard to answer. Like, when we look out at what we're able to do or not do, we have to closely look at all six high schools. Even our high schools within the district have different constraints, you know? And so Coltsnecks hallways are much wider than Friel Burrows hallways, you know, as like one example. And then we have to work backwards from that. And, and so my best answer is that, you know, we haven't lived through a global pandemic in this lifetime. The last time was 1918. We're living through it now. I think that I've, you know, four of my own children that are in school presently and have been impacted by this. And I understand what, you know, what, you know, what it looks like as a parent on the back end. You know, and in my household alone, we're going to have four different schedules that we live under in September. My wife is a teacher, I'm a superintendent here, my children go to two different school districts, so we'll have four different schedules and we're going to find a way to manage that. So I, I don't, you know, that's a long-winded way of saying, you know, what I want from the state as a superintendent is clarity. I don't want mixed messages. I don't, there is a fear that we're going to do an awful lot of planning and then be dictated to at the very end here. That's a real fear. And we've asked for as much specific guidance as early as possible so that we can make good decisions. We understand that a hybrid environment is where we're looking to start. I know it's important to have a robust remote environment because the, the, the likelihood of being remote is high at some point in the fall. And we know that. And so we're, we're planning, we're planning appropriately. Yeah, mine.
Hey, Dr. Sampson. Just back to Mr. Messinger's first point regarding the teachers at the end of the day between the one PM and three PM and professional development. Just a question to comment. It occurred to me that that would be a great time not only for professional development, but for the 40 to 50% of students that are remote learning, where the teacher may need to circle back and provide those students that may need additional support. That it would be an opportune time for the teachers to do that at that time. So I would imagine that the, you know, the administration will allow some flexibility to teachers to do that at that time.
Yeah, I should have, I should have mentioned that.
Yes.
We're, we're looking at that. We're looking at what all of that may entail, whether that's working with students that might need assistance. You know, we're, we're working collaboratively with, with our teachers association, with our teachers to, to land on what we think is going to be, is going to be beneficial. You know, obviously, kids are going to fall through the cracks and making sure that we find as many ways as possible to work with them. And that's how we've always envisioned that time. I don't think I included it when I went through it, but that's, that's a thought there, so.
Just one more point. I just, I think it's important that the public understands that there's no plan at this time to suspend or eliminate any courtesy busing.
Correct.
Because I know there's been some discussions in the communities about that. I know that it was mentioned in the road back plan put forth by the state. That if you could just comment on that for the public, that'd be great.
Yeah, so we're not eliminating courtesy busing. We, we have our, our full bus runs. You know, we know that they're going to be light in terms of, you know, not what they normally are with the percentages of students. But we feel that we're, you know, it was not, we're all, we would have already struggled with our routes if we eliminated courtesy busing because it has a ripple effect through what that looks like from a structural standpoint. Mr. Boyce can chime in if I'm missing anything here. But we, we didn't feel approved to eliminate courtesy busing at this point in time. We, we, we built our schedule around that, including that, those bus runs. We feel good about the, what that looks like in terms of the density standpoint of, of students on the bus. And we already have a plan in place next year to, to transition towards subscription busing as it was. So that's already in the works. And so we, we had already built that, that those bus runs out. And we're not going to, we're not going to yank them at this point in time because we have to rethink the entire process. I don't think it would be as efficient as we would like. And we're also, you know, we're, we're genuinely concerned that we're going to have a bus driver shortage with some of these routes as it is. But you want to add anything to courtesy busing?
No, you know, they're not independent standalone bus routes, right? They're embedded in routes that bring in kids from remote through courtesy to school. And as Dr. Sampson said, with the splitting of the students and, and parents who choose to, choose a full remote option, that, that were, the numbers that we're looking at for the buses, we should be able to accommodate that. So to reroute all of our system in such short order, it wouldn't have been practical.
Can I just, can I ask you another question about the buses? There was some sort of document I saw, and I think it was from a meeting, it might have been the superintendent's association, but it was like, it had like 75 questions that you were asking the state. Do you recall this document?
Yeah, it was Dr. Adal, a friend of mine, the guard state who, who put out. It actually ended up at 367, so maybe even top 400.
Okay, so basically that thing had a million questions. So forget the fact that with respect to bus drivers, a huge percentage of them are, you know, in groups of the population that might be susceptible, okay? Take that off the table for a second. But one of the things that document talked about was the whole, you needed a commercial driver's license to be a bus driver. And I think in that document, it said like, a lot of bus drivers quit because they couldn't repair an engine or they didn't know the engine is.
They changed those requirements.
Right. So that change, and in particular about the engine, was that going to go into effect for this school year? So like, even without the pandemic, right?
It was going to.
Was there still going to be a shortage because of that change?
Well, so even, even prior to that change, there is a shortage.
Right.
And usually there are shortages when, you know, when, when, when the economy is doing very well, right? There's, there are shortages. When the economy dips, you find more drivers. But the, that was going to cause, I don't know when that went into effect, but it was definitely going to impact because bus drivers, it laid, it, it laid a whole new level of accountability on them to be able to assess the engine, right?
Right, yeah. Yeah, so, you know, we, we have our own, we have 120 bus drivers approximately. So we have our own forces, that's, and we're at approximately 50/50 with our own forces versus contracted out. So with our own drivers and all the reliability that comes along with that, we, we have in place, you know, professional development training to, to get them up to speed and squared away on that. So I think our drivers are in a good place. But overall drivers that may not have that level of support, it just contributes to an ongoing shortage of bus drivers. And I do expect that to continue. So that'll, that'll be interesting to see where that leads us in the years to come.
I just wanted to say one thing. I didn't really know what to expect tonight. I know Manal and High School well and how well, because I worked there. But I love your quote, and I'm going to use it a lot, open to stay open. I think the plan is good. I think, you know, you're going to do, put 40 to 50% of your population back into the buildings, perhaps less, perhaps more. But I think the plan's good. I didn't really know what to expect. I mean, even looking at your parent and your pie charts and all the things you've kind of done, I didn't, I really didn't know. So, so you clarified so many things. I mean, I'm inundated with texts and emails, my community where I am in Ran Town, even my co-host, I have all high school kids. And I think it's a really good plan. And I didn't know really what to expect. And I heard the word hybrid, I knew. But to see it and to listen to you, I feel so much better. And I'm a biker, I'm all over the state riding. And, you know, New Jersey's hopping. I mean, I've never seen the state like this, the beaches, the parks. And Diana would probably be the best person to ask, but like, I think New Jersey has kicked up. I mean, I think we've fought the curve. I mean, I don't know what the barometer is. I really wish somebody could tell me one day, what is the barometer? 1% of the population in New Jersey with the virus, zero? Because I think we're having the same conversations we had three months ago when it comes to the virus. And I think New Jersey has really, the citizens have really kicked up. And, you know, I don't know what's in the hospitals, Diana would know better than me, but I wish somebody would say, hey, New Jersey's done really well. Schools, the schools are ready to go. It seems like we're in the same place we were three months ago in so many ways. But I just congratulate all of you, you know, open to stay open. I think that's what your plan is and it seems good. And I think the parents are going to be happy. There're going to be schools some part of the day, they're going to be virtual sometimes a week. I, I think it's good.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Murphy.
I think we're ready for whatever comes our way at this point.
It, you know, the, the, the difficulty right now, and Diana, maybe you've seen, you know, is the transmission rate. So the transmission rate a couple of months back was down to like 0.82. And it's crept up to like 1.11 this past week. And they, and I think it's the average, you know, positive is 15 years younger than what they were at the start of this. So, you know, I, I, I drive around my neighborhood and I, you know, I get a little frustrated because I see packs of kids not socially distanced, just hanging out. I see, I see parents throwing huge graduation parties with dozens and dozens of people in the backyard standing on top of each other. And I, I worry that things like that are going to make it difficult, make it more difficult for, for us to reopen or to stay open once we do open. Because at some point, you know, New Jersey was the tip of the spear in all this with New York, obviously. And we, you know, we, we went through it for, for three or four months. And now there's, there's other areas of the country who think took very different tacks than we did. And, you know, you're seeing places like Arizona and Texas with some huge spikes and Georgia and Florida. I don't know what that means for us, you know, in New Jersey ultimately with, with, with what it looks like. It's a frustrating, it's a frustrating place to be when I see just, you know, packs of people just, you know, on top of each other. And I think that's what you're seeing in the summer sometimes. So we'll see where it all lands. You know, I appreciate, I appreciate the feedback. I, I, you know, I, I do think that when we're, when we're finalized with this on August 10th, you know, we'll, we'll be ready to, we'll be ready to open our doors. We are subject to a lot of things that are beyond our control. And, you know, that will be, that will be frustrating. You know, and I think that, you know, the timelines on this are, are, you know, are, are potentially, are potentially problematic. There's a lot of unknown. And we'll see what the, you know, when, when the president of the NJA says it's not safe to come back, I, I assume there's going to be some battles there, you know? And I'm going to follow our mandate to bring kids back. So that's what we're going to do.
You may not know this, and I didn't take the time to look at it, but you get those alerts from NJA.com on your cell phone. Like, in the last few days, there was an alert, I really should have read it. It said something about, well, I haven't read the headline.
I wish you did.
After meeting with NJEA, Murphy came out and said this, like, I guess there was a meeting, like, what did the NJE tell him and then what did he?
Now, what happened on Friday is Marie Wilson, the president of the NJA, made a, a very strong statement that, you know, they have their own reopening plan.
Right.
And they, they outlined a number of what their expectations around what school systems should be doing to provide safety. And, you know, I understand some, some of what they were saying. The, and then I guess the, the governor at his daily press conference following that statement was asked about that and still said that schools need to reopen. So, you know, where that, that's, you know, mid-July, where that is mid-August, we'll see. You know, I do know that the biggest difficulty in this, like everything else, you know, I think, I think social media is potentially terrible influence. I think that there's a ton of misinformation out there, you know, both ways. I think, you know, I, I can't begin to explain to the board some of the questions I've been asked that are just completely built on faulty information, on, on, you know, sort of both sides of the aisle, returning kids and, and not returning kids. And, you know, we're in, you know, we're in it right now. So, you know, it's, it's a, it's, you know, it's a storm. So we'll weather it. A friend of mine at a, at a webinar last week had a great analogy. You know, people are saying we're all in the same boat. And, and he said, well, we are, we're all in the same storm. Our boats are very different, you know? And that, and that depends on how people manage this, right? So we are all in the same storm, but our, our ability to adapt and to thrive and how we've been impacted is, is different from family to family. And I think that, you know, I'm always just approaching it from coming at that I don't know what the other individual's experience is or isn't. And the other, you know, and, and, and don't pretend to, to assume, you know? People, people, and some parents here were shocked when we said we loaned out 500 Chromebooks. You know, in these communities, kids needed them, families didn't have them, they weren't connected to the internet. Mr. Dill and I went on the phone with Verizon today, setting up hotspots for the fall. There's a number of our kids don't have it, you know? By the way, they're not being as generous in the fall as they were in the spring. So there's that as well. You know, all of this, you know, the, the, you know, some students in this environment thrive being home. You know, I have four children. My son would stay remote for the next 30 years, you know? My daughters all want to go back in, in the most desperate way you could imagine. He, you know? And, and so even seeing how it impacts individual children is, is, is different. And so, you know, and a lot of the students who are in this remote environment, I think, you know, if mom or dad are working and they're not home to support them, and what does that look like? And it's a, it's a whole mixed bag of, you know, an entire generation of kids. So we'll try and mitigate that as much as possible in whatever we do come September.
Open this, open this table.
Well, I just, I want to, I want to go through, I want to, I want to, I want to just go through two other quick items. And I wanted to share this with the board because what, and the public, because what was, what was lost of, this was lost a little bit in the pandemic. And so obviously this is a, a terrible time of racial unrest as well. And I had a lot of students and, and community members over the past couple of months reach out to me and, you know, ask a lot of questions about what we, what we have done or haven't done, you know, about students of color in particular in our school district. And I have a, I have a working focus group of students from across the, the high schools that I met with and had some, Dr. Hazel and I had some real positive dialogue. And we're going to meet regularly with that group. And I've got another group of recent alumni who I met with and spent over an hour with on a, on a call. And we're going to meet. regularly as well, and just listening to some of their concerns. And one of the things that I pointed out that I don't, you know, maybe I don't sometimes celebrate some of the things we do really well here, because I'm just a keep-moving kind of person. But I do wanna, I do wanna share with the board tonight, you know, we, when we, when we, I got here in 2011, I looked at a lot of the structures in the, in the, in the school system, and, and, you know, this is, this is the work in my dissertation as well. What I found was a lot of systemic blocks to students of color, to poor students, over representation in special education, under-representation in AP and honors classes, and really set about trying to dismantle that here. And so, ten years later, to give everyone perspective, you know, we, our, our, our black population in the district has decreased by, by thirty percent since 2010. But their enrollment in our AP courses has increased by ninety-eight percent. Our Latinx population has increased by forty-seven percent since 2010, so we have a growing Latinx population. Their representation in our AP classes has grown by a hundred and fifty percent in that time. And, and so, I don't think, you know, we don't celebrate that enough, but our work here, and it's, you know, the, I've, I've been fortunate to have my entire team with me for almost this whole run, and I've been fortunate to have a very supportive board for this. Our work around dismantling systemic barriers for opportunity for traditionally marginalized groups has been featured in Phi Delta Captain, it's been featured in Ed Leadership, it's been featured in a book called Equity Visits, and it's gonna be featured in an upcoming book from Tom Hatt, Shannon Columbia University about our work here. And so, I, I probably should toot my, our horn a little bit more about that stuff, but I don't, because it's just part of the work to us. But those numbers are staggering when, when you really think about them in terms of providing opportunities and supports, and, and that's all while keeping those test scores stable. So, I did wanna just share that with the board this evening. And then the final update is, and I can't even believe I have to update this, Dr. Hazel, but the NJSLA science standard of which students do not need to pass, have to just sit for, and doesn't matter for anything at this point in time, our students took it and, you know, level three and four is like the, whatever they deem proficient, but our, our students were somewhere around twenty-three percent at that, and more than fifty percent of the students were, were at level two or below. We're looking at time on task, we, we, we truly think the students didn't take the test, that it's, it's not requi, it's not pertinent to anything, the state mandated it a couple years ago.
Not a graduation requirement.
It's nothing. And, and we fought against it like crazy here in the district, we thought it was a terrible waste of time. There's a federal mandate that state needs to meet for grade eleven, so what they did was create a comprehensive science assessment, but any student, it has a physics component, so any student who hasn't had physics can't, doesn't know the physics section of it, which we said that doesn't make a lot of sense. There's, you know, a, a, a significant number of students that don't take physics, and we're looking, we're, we're doing a deeper dive on that, but we're able to analyze time on task on some of these things, and what we've found is that our students aren't even trying. And it's, it's hard to force them to, given the context of the test itself, but we're looking, this year was the first year of this, I, I expect all this to be waived again next year. We'll take a deeper look at, at what it looks like, but we think the data is garbage. And so, I'm not sure what we're gonna do with it. And it's one of those seven potential required tests that students have to sit for but don't have to pass and don't need for graduation. And so, a number of our students, I think, don't show up on that day as well, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's all part of our open district with standards along instruction, standards along the trends, standards along assessments, so we're looking, we look at that all the time as we're taking to our standards and embedding that into the program. So, you know, we of course take a serious look at it, but, you know, right now, when something is not a graduation requirement, it is, it's really tough to be able to get, you know, the full effort on that assessment, but, you know, they are saying potentially twenty-one, twenty-two, that that would be part of, for the SAT requirement.
So, if everybody remembers, one of the things I wrote where I was criticized for in 2015, I wrote a blog that the Washington Post picked up and ran, where I accused the state at the time of potentially developing a science assessment that would be a graduation requirement. And I said that at the time because I'd heard some officials say it off the record. And they, they eviscerated me publicly about, about that blog, called me out and said that that was never stated, and asked me to run a retraction, which I refused, I put an asterisk next to it. But, you know, that makes me nervous that, you know, that's a thought. It, it's, it's testing the test with no, no, no attachment to anything meaningful, and it's, it's a frustrating waste of instructional time for our students, frankly. That'll, that'll conclude my report on that. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Sam. Oh, I have one.
Oh, hang on, we have one more question, Mr. Rassatolo, sorry.
I'm sorry. Did, did the schools get back what their success rate was on the AP tests?
Yes.
Like, was it, I, I don't expect you to know, because it probably just came out in the last few days, but did anybody see preliminary figures that were encouraging or not encouraging?
So, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, we, we haven't digested all the yet because it just came last week, but it, yeah, it's, in terms of the numbers and the average score remaining stable, it's, it's encouraging. It was encouraging.
Like, when they, when you compare, but obviously this year was two questions, and you did.
It was a totally different.
Right. Like, just looking at the United States, like, would there's a noticeable change? Like, people did so much better because there was only two questions, or like, I'm just curious, in terms of the national numbers, did they ever come out saying?
They're out, but we're, we're still pulling that together, what all of ours looked like across the six high schools. I mean, I can tell you was, it, it, it's been a, a general trajectory up for us, so...
It was all virtual, right?
It was.
Wow, that's good.
AP tests in general here, again, and I'll go back to this data from two, two thousand eleven, there were eleven thousand eight-hundred students in this district, and we gave about twenty-two AP tests, and the average score was about three-two. Last year, we gave almost seven thousand AP tests with a thousand fewer students in the district, and the average score was about three-two.
Twenty-two, you said, really?
Yeah. Again, we don't, we don't toot our horns enough about some of this, but these are like staggering numbers of success, so... You know, we were, when the college board used to award districts for increasing both equity and outcomes, we were the only district that, that were, we were the only district that was on that list. We were on that list four out of five years, and I don't think anybody else was even on it twice in the, in the state, but that's, you know, they might have been, but not, not to the degree we were when that, when that award came out.
What did, what did the individual school get? Like, let's say hypothetically, Pulsnet High School had the highest score, but is there like AP Honorable, is that what it's called?
Yeah, that was what it was.
And we missed it by a student or two, one, ten, a year after.
We missed it once by one student who was miscategorized, which is interesting.
But that go to every school, or do we?
It goes to the district.
Oh.
Goes to the district.
Yeah, not by school.
It's not by school. The, yeah, I mean, we, I mean, two thousand thirteen actually won an award for all that stuff. Again, we, you know, I think it's important sometimes to, to highlight some of these things, especially in this context, you know, we've taken down a lot of barriers for kids to have access to these courses, but we've also built up an awful lot of support for them to be successful in these courses. And so, those are the AP numbers, the numbers in, in movement into honors are even higher. So, kids are taking more challenging courses, and we know that ultimately that has an effect on, 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 you know, the trajectory of the rest of their life, so.
The full.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
The full district report, Representative Anderson, maybe July twenty-second?
Yeah, it's not out yet. We, we've got, we have like individual building that we're going through, but the, the profile's not here yet.
Thank you. Yeah, I recognize that this is gonna be the last meeting that we have prior to our in-person graduation ceremonies, which are gonna be held next week. And just a comment and a question, I wanna applaud you for putting it all together, and I, as a parent with students in district, I certainly understand and respect and appreciate the fact that you allowed the students to vote as to whether or not they wanted to be together as a group one last time after having their school year abruptly ended in the way that it ended, and that those students wanted to be together one last time. As a parent, I understand how there are certainly parents that wanna be there to witness that in-person ceremony, who's a difficult situation for students and parents. I can see both sides of it, and I applaud your handling of it. And do you have any final remarks that you would like to make to the public prior to the ceremonies that are gonna be held next week?
Yeah, so, I will say that I was, I was disappointed in the, in the negative way that a, a large parent group almost accused us of, of not caring about their child because we were trying to honor the students' wishes. And what I'll say publicly is, we called a number of parents who said, I am coming to that graduation ceremony no matter what you do. And we said, ask your son or daughter what they, what they want, they'll, they'll tell you. And we had parents who said, I asked them, and I don't care, I'm coming. And so, what that set us up with is, we had a couple hundred like that, you know, like the real difficult, this is a ceremony, and I talked to Mr. Tiscano about it, this is a ceremony that's taking place after the school year's over, these are technically not our students anymore, these are technically not our parents any longer, and we weren't going to be put in a position where we're social distancing and trying to make sure that we maintain as safe an environment as possible, where we would potentially be physically removing parents from their child's graduation. It was a no-win situation. There were some local decisions across the country where local judges issued injunctions for parents who sought to stop the graduation ceremony without them being a part of it, even though we know we would prevail legally in doing that. Why, we, we don't, we didn't wanna be in court with some of our parents over this. A number of them told us that that was going to happen, a number of them told us that they were gonna come onto the premises no matter what we did, and a whole heck of a lot of other things. And so, we said, you know what, it's not worth the potential exposure to the school district and all of this, I don't wanna be on the other side of fighting parents about this, we tried to honor what the kids have done, but there was too large of a parent group pushing back the other way and demanding to be there. And so, we made the decision to, to run multiple sessions. I think it disappointed most of our students, and I understand that, and many of our students then reached out to me, very upset with me. And, you know, my answer to them was, well, ask your mom or dad about it, you know, because we weren't, we weren't fighting large parent groups over this. It was a disappointing, it was a disappointing end to something that we were trying to do that we thought was gonna be great for kids. And I can tell you, we also had parents threatening to show up and count heads and tell us if we were violating the EO at all. This is the stuff we were dealing with over this. As a parent, I was horrified. It was, it was, it was a concerted group, it wasn't, you know, certainly the vast majority of parents. I had an awful lot of parents reach out to me afterwards who said, I wish I had spoken up sooner, because I can't believe that these folks pushed you in that way, as a district, to make that decision. But I didn't, I didn't make that decision in a vacuum, I called legal counsel, I talked to them about the exposure, I talked to them about what it might look like, and, and we made the decision that there was, it was not, it was not a good situation for the board to be in. And so, we went to multiple ceremonies. But it was a disappointing end to dealing with a, a select group of parents, Mr. President.
Thank you for the explanation. Is each principal designing their own format?
They're, they're all working together to have some consistency there, Mr. President, so...
Does Dr. Lee explain, I gotta give him kudos, it sounds great. I didn't know if he thought of that, or everyone's doing it.
They, they, that, that's the collective group, I mean, they're, they were all, you know, one of the things that the principals and we felt were important as we, as we planned through this was, you know, a level of consistency in terms of what the ceremonies were gonna look like. They're obviously not gonna look like a traditional graduation ceremony, you know, we're putting the three chairs, and you next to mom and dad, and, you know, we'll get something, and some abbreviations, H's and such, but it will provide at least, you know, some opportunity for students to get back together on the, on the physical grounds. And I will say this, and, and, you know, we ran focus groups, and I wanna be clear, because some members of the community said, well, you, they didn't interview my child. We ran focus groups with hundreds of kids, and it was near unanimous that they wanted to be together, I mean, almost unanimous. And that wasn't good enough for some of these parents, you know? They, they, they said, you didn't survey every single child. And I said, but we met with groups in each high school, you know, throughout all of this, and just asked them, if you could do one thing, what was it? They said, be together for graduation. That was like a recurring theme. So, it was a tremendous disappointment to me, how that turned out, and how some, some folks responded to it.
Yeah, no, my son's one of the upset ones, he definitely wanted to be with everybody.
Well, you, you lived the Facebook life that evening as well, you know, and you saw some of the, you know, the feedback, I'll leave it at that.
Yes, they wanted the names of who was in there.
Can't make it up. All right, Mr. President.
Okay, it's time for board reports, and we got one, which is policy, that's Mr. Bruno. If Mr. Bruno can, for example, that place.
Do you have a stretch of floor? We're just gonna have him come to the mic so that everybody can hear.
Taking the doctor's seat. Well, there's eleven policies. We met last Monday night at the Zoom, my favorite, I love Zooms. I'm taking my mask off, I have some surgery, so I wanna make sure you can hear me.
I need my glasses, we're over sixty, we gotta have glasses.
So, the first one, very important, related to COVID-19, the Families First Response Act, it creates two emergency leave requirements, which is a response to COVID-19. The law took place on April first, 2020, and is slated to remain until December thirty-first, 2020, which will be part of this upcoming school year. The Emergency Family Medical Leave, immense proportions of the MLAA to permit eligible employees to take up to twelve weeks expanded family leave to care for a child whose childcare facility has closed because of the virus. The Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act provides up to two weeks or eighty hours of paid sick leave reasons related to COVID-19. Both acts apply to public school systems, which are required to adopt these policies as they, these change. The second one has to do with religion in the schools. The United States Department of Education updated its guidance to protect prayer and religious expression in public and elementary schools. The 2020 guidance is comprehensive to the twenty, to the twenty-three guidance, oh-three guidance, but there is no material revisions in the new 2020 guidance. The second one, which has to do with sports and the safety of our athletes, is the heat participation policy. The new policy, this is stature, requires school districts to adopt and implement the NJSIAP heat participation policy. While the district has been implementing these policies all along, this new one requires compliance with the NJSIAP current heat policy. The second one, which is P-2622. The second one, which is P2622, having to do with student assessment. There were some minor revisions to nature of the policies to provide better clarity for the school district regarding code requirements. Policy PR511, the eligibility of residency versus non-residency. Due to the revision, extending statute, which requires that the school district may not condition the student's enrollment on the New Jersey motor vehicle only. It does not have the name or address of the parent on file. School districts should be aware, if there is a dispute between the district and the parent in regard to a student's eligibility for enrollment, the district may still request the information from motor vehicles. However, if the motor vehicles have not had the information on the parent, the lack of information cannot be used against a child's eligibility. Policy 522, having to do with student attendance. This policy and regulation 5200 has been revised to provide more detailed explanation of the distinction between attendance recording for excused and the undisguised absences in the official state register and excused and undisguised absences as related to credits required withdrawal. Policy 5320, having to do with shots. It's been revised for more concise guidance, especially for students with medical problems. A school nurse shall annually look at the records to confirm that the child's conditions have not changed. Policy 5330. This policy regarding guidance provides greater detail regarding the drugs and the standard that is training requirements for those employees who are giving out the drugs or administering the drugs to the student. It's up to the school nurse or the administrator to look at the records of the child and make sure that they are getting the proper drugs for their illnesses. 5610, having to do with suspension. The new statute requires a principal to convey a meeting between the student and the appropriate school personnel after a student has experienced multiple suspensions and may be subject to provided expulsion from public school to identify any of the student's behavior or health difficulties. The purpose of this meeting is to ascertain whether the student needs other support or interventions or referrals to utilize in the school's community. The next one, having to do with expulsions. The new statute requires the principal to convey a meeting between the student and the appropriate school personnel after the student has experienced multiple suspensions or may be subject to proposed expulsion from the public school to identify any of the student's behavior or health difficulties. The purpose of this meeting is to ascertain whether the student needs extra support or interventions. The last one, having to do with personnel records of the employee. This update is existing policy offers clarifications on the limits of the public's access to what is included in a district employee's personnel files. Together with the regulation, it offers additional verification on what the documents are to be kept in employees' personal records. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno.
You're welcome.
And, Mr. Voice, we're going to move to public participation, but at this point, are there any changes to the agenda that you wish to know?
Yes, there are two. There's one amendment and one additional resolution. I'll do the amendment first to G6, Sean Dermody. The school location should be changed from Manaliken High School to Freehold Township High School. And then, the additional resolution, as Dr. Samson mentioned earlier, we're going to add a meeting for August 10th and I'll ask Mr. Toscano to read that in under K6.
Okay, K6 will be motion to authorize Board Secretary to advertise a special board meeting on Monday, August 10th, 2020, at the Board's Administration Building.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Asatol.
Okay, since I'm away, I would like you to take over the public participation if there is any shot. Could you do that, please?
Sure, we have one member of the public here with us tonight and I will ask you to stand up and introduce yourself.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Alyssa Townsend and my son is a student in the Pop Model Program at Freehold Park. Last spring was a disaster for my son. The academic losses as well as the social isolation have set back to him. As a teacher myself, I evidently tried my best to assist him. Sadly, however, I was incapable of meeting his needs. And despite some of the teachers' best efforts to individualize his assignments, they often fell flat as there were no formative assessments or opportunities to reteach. Most of his goals and his IDP were not addressed at all. I'm here this evening because the district's hybrid schedule allows for very limited in-school time. In the spirit of equity, I'm asking that administration consider the needs of the most significantly disabled students in the district. Students traditionally self-contained settings who sadly cannot access their education virtually. I'm requesting that the district consider having this population in daily. There are many currents that we have, the level of client field. However, students with significant cognitive developmental behavioral deficits make few with any means by completing assignments in remote learning. Many of these students' goals cannot be adequately addressed in Zoom, Google Classroom, or through screencasts. Teachers need immediate feedback to drive instruction and most of these students often need opportunities for extra practice and reteach. I know you guys have to make difficult decisions as you attempt to balance keeping everyone safe with providing the quality education that our communities best. And I know and be able. All I ask is that you please not forget this very small population of students who relied on these last few years of their education entitled to become as independent as possible. This can't happen to resume. These students need to be in school. So, may I ask, is the board considering having this population in 10,000? If not, how are we going to address these?
Yeah, so, we are considering that. And we're looking at that right now with our specialized populations, that program, workplace training, LLD, autism. We're looking at five days a week for those students. So, that's how we're trying to, that's part of our hybrid plan, by the way, because we agree with you. So, we're still in the planning stages, but that's the goal right now.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for braving it out in the middle of everything as well. Sorry, Mr. Asatol, there was just a question, the public question was around, are we considering bringing in some of our student populations more daily rather than just hybrid? Particularly LLD, workplace training, autism program and such. And as I mentioned earlier to the board in our conversations prior to the public sessions, that we were looking at that. So, I just answered, Ms. Townsend, who came out this evening just to ask what we were thinking in terms of our planning and we're looking at an everyday option for those student groups.
Okay, so that concludes public participation. And let's move on to the items on the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve items G1 through K6?
Motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Bruno. Second, Mr. Heskey.
I have a question.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Question, Mr. Messinger.
I noticed that in the bill paying, we were giving a lot of money out to all the students who go to private school and we pay them for transportation. Can you explain what transpired in the second half of last year when the kids weren't being transported to school?
Sure, so, just a little background. Private school students are entitled under state law to transportation to their school, however, it's taxed at a price of $1,000 per student. So, the county will aggregate all students. That's done through the Education Services Commission in an attempt to build routes and get contracts from bus contractors that come in under $1,000 a student. In the event they're not able to do that, then parents are entitled to what's called an AID-in-Lua transportation payment of $1,000. That $1,000 is sent to parents in two pieces, $500 halfway through the year and $500 at the end of the year. The payments for the end of the year have been prorated, so rather than getting $500, they received $167 for that second payment of the AID-in-Lua transportation payment.
Right, so, the question was around transportation of private school students and Mr. Voice explained that if transportation is not available, those parents are offered AID-in-LU, which is typically a $1,000 payment, but which was prorated in the spring, which was Mr. Messinger's specific question of what happened there, to the rate of $167. And so, that was the answer because I believe there are a number of those folks that are on the agenda.
Any one of us discussion?
Yeah, I have one question. I know that in the past we've discussed paying stipends for sports activities and such. I see that item three, the last sentence in that resolution is employment is contingent upon student enrollment, participation, and need. So, am I going to assume that if these activities do not go forward, that the need is not there?
That would be particularly a matter of legal interpretation, potentially. We certainly put that language there to imply that, that if they do not go forward, they have not earned, if they're not engaged in, you know, compensation is something that should be looked at.
Okay.
So, that language was added to those approvals.
Thank you.
Okay, could I have a roll call, please, on these G1 through K6?
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Hagley?
Yes, except I'm staying on G3 as refers to Christopher Provo.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Asatol?
Yes. Okay, old business. Are there any members wishing to discuss old business?
No old business, Mr. Asatol.
Okay, any members wishing to discuss new business?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
You had mentioned when you talked about sports, how some trainings are done. So, basically, what's actually transpiring at the schools with respect to health screening or anything like that? Because I'm sure these kids aren't just showing up and doing whatever they want.
So, Mr. Messinger is asking about the athletic training that started this week and what the processes look like. So, the students are filling out a COVID form that is created by the NJSI. We use that form, we have our athletic trainers who are then onsite who take their temperatures prior to them being admitted to whatever the activities are and then they're kept in smaller groups or pods as they move through the activities. So, pretty much a three-step process before they even take the field.
All right, sounds good.
So, a question around just the athletic training. And so, we just started this week, so we'll play it by ear. The board may have seen, there's been some districts across the state where some students have tested positive and all that and they've shut down everything. So, we'll see how it goes. We're trying to be very diligent and make sure that we have screening, that we have the trainers onsite taking temperatures and that we keep kids socially distanced.
They are separated.
Yeah, they're trying to, yes. Yep. And that's all per the NJSI guidance, so we're following that to the T. Back to you, Mr. President.
For discussion, none. Hearing none, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Motion, motion, motion.
Mr. Moses made three motions.
Mr. Moses won the motion by the sheer number.
Motion.
Second, Mr. Bruno.
His own motion, yeah, he did.
I already said it. All right, I'll second it. Hearing no more, I will do this up.
Have fun in your day.
Yay, yay.
Yay. Yes.
That's like all favors, President.
You look good there, Carl.
What's that?
You look good there.
Oh, thank you.
You got the two of there in the slide.
Yeah.
Good night. Good night, everybody.